Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, November 18th. Time is 7:02 PM. And tonight, we are in regular session, but before that, we're going to have a public hearing. And this regards the rezoning portions of Court Street, East and West Carpenter Street, East and West State Street, and Fern Street from a B3 zone to a B2D zone. It's been discussed at committee meetings previously, and we always like, we require the opportunity, and we welcome public comments about this topic. If you would like to come up and speak about this, all you need to do is come to the podium. We do have a three-minute timer that we set, so that we allow folks to, as many people to speak as want to. Is there anyone wanting to speak to this rezoning? Yes, Joan? Come on up.
(inaudible)
Okay, we'll do that after Joan. Okay, thanks.
I guess the first thing I'd like to say, while I'm here in opposition to the zoning change, is when I spoke about this issue at a city council meeting, maybe a week ago or two, I asked if city council members knew how many parking places would no longer be required. That is, the number of parking places that would no longer be required, based on the current requirements for businesses on the first floor in the whole area that is being discussed in terms of rezoning. So I guess I would ask, have we determined what that is?
Was anybody able to ascertain that information?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. We don't have that.
Well, I had to check with Code just for a portion of North Court Street. That would just be a small portion of the area, and I was unable to get a clear number. So, to me, that is the issue, parking. And even though we may have reputable landlords in those businesses at this time, that doesn't mean they'll always be there, and that they'll always be reputable. And they could conceivably rent out those spaces that are now dedicated to their businesses, and their employees, or their visitors, or their guests, or whoever comes into their businesses, depending on the type, would then be parking in the close-in neighborhoods. And that would also include my street, Mount Street. And the other concern I have, looking very closely through the Code, is that in a B3 for eating and drinking establishments, there's a 250-foot requirement from an R1 and R2. But in a B2D, it's only 100 feet. I don't know if anybody recalls, but at one point, through an administrative error in a previous administration, there was a bar built, I believe now where Goldsberry has their apartment complex, on the corner of Grosvenor and Carpenter. And that was an administrative error, and it should not have been there. But now, it conceivably could be within that vicinity. So those are the two things that I would like to address to council. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments. And Mayor Patterson, is that something that we can work with the Code office to find out the number of spaces, the information that Ms. Kornansky had requested?
I can do that. President Nisley?
I appreciate it. And, yes, come on up, yes, come on up and speak.
Thank you. Good evening. Well, here we are again in Athens, Ohio, having our usual fun with the system eating us up.
Oh, and if you could let us know your name, so we have it for the record. We know you, but it's just so everybody else in the audience...
You think I still remember my name? I'm Bill Umbroski, 17 Ring Street.
Thank you.
And I live up over the hill there. And my concern, one of the concerns about this project, or this new ordinance, is there will be extra cars, and extra service vehicles, and all that. And that all adds to the pollution scene. And as you well know, hot air goes up, and so the pollution and so forth is going to be added to what's already there from Court Street going up the North Hill. And the other thing that's an additional problem is the addition of noise. And there'll be more noise, especially at certain times of the year, added to the residential areas. And I see this as a university project. Most of the people that would occupy these rooms would be here on university business, or university fund, or something like that, I'm sure. And so I see the town as being gobbled up and whirling away, and the university slowly, every few years or so, taking another chunk out of the city of Athens. So I think there's a lot to this request that has to be considered, other than what's been done so far. And I think it ought to be tabled, or done away with, or something, because it's not good for the town. It may be good for certain individuals, it may be good for the university, but it's not good for the town here. And I object to there being another project put on our table, when we've got so many projects that haven't been addressed yet, or haven't been finished yet. Let's slow down, let's get them all on the table, and find out how many developments, or whatever there is, there are going to be from now, from 10 years from now, let's say. And let's put a priority to those things, and work on them in a priority order, instead of jumping from one to another all the time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience that would like to speak on this? Rob?
So, Rob Delacqua, 124 Morris Avenue, here in the city. I've spoken before to the commission on this, and city council previously, and I wholeheartedly support this effort. It is the smart thing for the city to do, to rezone this to a B2D like the rest of Uptown. It's going to benefit the entire community, the city, the residents. It's going to make it a better environment for business, and more flexible, more flexibility for the landowners and developers that might want to infill, or improve the existing buildings. Those are all good things for the city, if those happen. We've had some of that occur nearby. Passion Works, above Passion Works, there's new apartments, beautifully done, a nice addition, nice infill. That's the kind of thing we could see more of if we rezone this area. Also, filling in some of those missing teeth. We've got parking lots along North Court Street, and empty spaces where there could be buildings, or where it's not well utilized, and all those places could be filled in and improved if the zoning change were to occur. It makes it much more likely, and more flexible for the developers and landowners to make something like that happen. I think that it's only common sense, and this makes sense with what has been recommended by studies, the city's commission. One study about improving Uptown, the Act of Transportation Plan, was produced two years ago, recommended this exact change. And it's going to improve the city for transportation as well. So it's going to improve transportation options for people walking, biking, transit. And there's plenty of parking already. So I don't really see a parking issue created by what slight change there would be with the number of required spaces. So, again, I wholeheartedly endorse this and support it. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, Alyssa. And then Alyssa, and then Bill. And then Councilmember Grace has a statement also, from someone else. And I always like to remember that if you could do name, address, and if you represent a group.
My name is Alyssa Bernstein. I do not represent a group here. I live at 19 Fairview Avenue, which is on the ridge just north of Court Street. I just want to say, it seems to me that there is not an abundance of parking in this town. Seems to me that parking has become more and more restricted. And certainly, parking in the area that we're talking about, just north of the end of Court Street, is highly limited. And also, with regard to getting permission to build buildings that are higher, in order to have more density, and perhaps to have more student apartments, I think that was something that was discussed in some of the writing that I've read. I think it's perhaps relevant to keep in mind that, for the past couple of years, Ohio University has seen sharply dropping enrollments, which is now creating a crisis, a huge budget crisis for the university, and they are projecting continued drops in enrollment, very significant drops. So insofar as the arguments in favor of this zoning change are driven partly by claims to the effect that we need new, to build new apartments, I think that's highly questionable. Thank you.
Thanks.
(inaudible) 34 Grosvenor Street. I guess I came here initially out of curiosity, but also to make the point that's already been made about the overflow, you know, more overflow parking into the neighborhoods just north of the block in question. And I wasn't here when Joan Kornansky had earlier referred to her early, or query about how many parking spots would be lost. And I was kind of shocked, that when she raised it again, there had been no inquiry by members of council about, you know, what that was. I had the opportunity over the weekend to meet with one of the members of council for coffee, and I, he said to me, "It's going to pass." And it just worries me that the, there's just too much of a rush to push this thing through. You know, it was defeated four years ago, and I don't see what the change has been. I ask you to please, at least slow down on this, but certainly not to pass it. Please don't.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience members? Okay, if not, Councilmember Grace?
Thank you, President Nisley. This was emailed to me with the request that it be included in the record this evening. Dear council members, please submit my comments, as I am unable to attend the public hearing tonight. As a former member of the BZA, former Third Ward City Council member, and current member of the Affordable Housing Commission, I cannot support changing the current zoning on North Court. This morning, I walked the streets of North Congress, Grosvenor, and Franklin, and observed that there was no street parking spaces in the first blocks north of Carpenter Street. To discontinue the parking rule in the North Court Street block would be a burden on the near-north neighborhood, as residents would likely be searching for street parking further from their residence. It would also set development in a position to increase density, which would also increase parking needs on these near-north streets. I'm also opposed to increasing the floor limit from three to four. This end of Court Street at times is overwhelmed with noise, foot traffic on the sidewalks, and jaywalking due to the types of businesses located there. Adding more housing units would likely stress the current infrastructure at all levels, including livability. The students I've spoken with often don't live in that section for a second year due to the noise and evening activities. Please leave the zoning as it stands. Michelle Pappy.
Thanks. If no other public comment, we'll consider this public hearing closed. It's 7:16 PM. And thank you for the comments that you brought tonight. We'll now move on to the regular business session. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and all council members are present. Next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session of city council held on November 4th, 2019. If I could have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion and second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. Under communications, city council has received from the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, a notice that all permits to sell alcoholic beverages will expire on February 1st, 2020, and that every permit holder must file a renewal application. So, just so we're informed of that. Those do come up for renewal every year, and I know in some municipalities and cities, they have filed against certain places that hold those liquor permits if there have been a lot of problems with them. It's done more so in Columbus than it has been ever around here. But that is a possibility for that kind of thing to happen. Other communications from council members? Yes, Councilmember Cottis?
Thank you. And just as my monthly reminder, that the next Athens City School Board meeting will be happening this Thursday, that's the 21st of November, at 6:30 PM, at the Athens High School Auditorium.
Okay. Thank you. And any other communications? Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, President Nisley. I just wanted to share with the audience, as well as my colleagues on council, that I, as well as them, are in receipt of probably close to two dozen or more letters, emails, in support of the Bailey's Trail project. Thank you.
Thanks. Communications from other elected officials? Law Director Eliason? Okay.
No report.
Auditor. And before we move on to the mayor, I know our treasurer, city treasurer, Mary Ann McClure is here with a report for us.
Thank you, President Nisley. I was asked, I'm here to give the third quarter interest income report. Our year-to-date total is $137,140.55. And I think that I mentioned at the last report that the projections were going to be adjusted. At this point, my best estimate is around $180,000, probably. I had intended to withdraw some of the CDs that were due, but as the interest rates have changed downward, I probably will not do that unless we need to. So, it won't be, I thought they'd be a little bit more, but that's pretty much it. So, I'm going to keep the rates we have, because they're three-year CDs.
Okay. So you're saying approximately $180,000?
That's my target for the year.
Okay.
And you all have a copy. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Other than that, the projections are significantly, they were higher, correct, at the beginning of the year?
Right. And that was not done by me. And I think that we'd already talked about that we knew that they needed to be changed, but that's in process, so...
Okay. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Reisner?
Are there any other financial vehicles that the city should be looking at to perhaps find a better source of revenue, other than just CDs?
Well, we do have some funds with a brokerage firm in Cincinnati, where we're invested in some mutual funds, and some paper that we're allowed to invest in, but the city's limited by state law. So we can't invest in any high-risk. There's some corporate funds we can, but not too many. So, and I do, we do have some money in the Star Plus Ohio, as well as with the brokerage firm, and different forms of CDs, one of them Cedars, that we have at Century National. So, you know, we try to spread it out a little bit.
I see.
Councilmember McGee?
Thank you. Are there any limitations, such as non-investments in fossil fuel industries, that the city would pursue, or has pursued? I mean, are there any limitations like that at the current time?
Not really, as long as the corporate paper is of a certain kind. And when the investment firm that I work with wanted to move some of the money over, I was able to have some input on where the money is. I can get that list to you. I did cross off a couple of it.
Perhaps the next city council might be interested in that.
Sure. That'll be fine. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. If no further questions, thanks for being here tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Patterson?
We just have a comment, looking at this over. Treasurer McClure, I certainly appreciate how diversified our portfolio looks with the various accounts that you're adjusting.
Thanks. And communications from the mayor?
I, like council, have also received 26 emails from a broad swath of individuals of interest in the Bailey. One that was most notable that I'm not going to read, it's two pages in length, and you would not like me reading the whole thing. However, it is from an individual, Gary Sungquist, who was the 2012 International Mountain Bike Hall of Famer. And some of the things that he speaks to in this letter, which was quite an eye-opener, is in the Iron Range in Minnesota, and looking at comparing the Bailey Trail system, or the potential Bailey Trail system, the Bailey Trail system, and the systems up in Minnesota, and making some interesting comparables in terms of the distance at which the populace would drive to get on that particular mountain bike trail system in comparison to ours, and the population, and access to it. I gave council a copy of this email. I didn't realize you'd already received it. Hopefully, you've read it, because it is an interesting bit of information for the trail system that we will be experiencing.
Thank you.
Other than that, no other communication.
Okay. We're ready to proceed. All right. We now have ordinances for third reading. And the first one is an ordinance to repeal and replace Athens City Code Title 35, Cable Communications, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt this ordinance?
Second.
Thank you. This is another one of those housekeeping ordinances that we have to do from time to time, because state and national laws change. And this is pretty much what this does. Mayor?
Mayor Patterson?
I would like to make the request to table this particular piece of legislation. There's been information that has come to light through Charter Communications, and wanting to talk with us with a little more detail about this particular piece of legislation.
And there is somebody here from Spectrum. Is that true?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian.
So, we'll get to that. Okay. Well, that means I have to withdraw my request to adopt. You have to tell us what you...
And Law Director, would it be appropriate to have Mr. Young speak before we table, take a motion to take, make a motion table?
After the motion.
After the motion to table? Okay.
So I move to table this at the request of the mayor.
Okay.
Second on that.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. So we have a motion and second for tabling, and putting this on the table. And in our particular rules for council, we do allow any kind of comments or debate. Are there any comments from council members? Okay.
Can we have a hint why this needs to be tabled?
Because there's new information.
There's new information, so...
Can we have a hint what the new information is?
This came to me from the Service Safety Director, and the Service Safety Director's communications, I believe, had spoken with the Law Director on this. But, again, there was concern on the individual who's here tonight, so...
Okay. So we do have, right now, a motion and second for tabling this ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay. The motion has been tabled, but we could, any comments?
I think we'll have discussion before the vote.
Before the vote?
So Katie can come up?
If you want to. It's up to you.
Thank you, Council President, members of council, Mr. Mayor. Brian Young with Charter Communications. We do business with Spectrum. Appreciate the mayor asking to table it. Like he said, I did talk to the Service Director, and there were some concerns. We do want to apologize. We were not aware that the ordinance had been introduced. I had had a meeting with the Service Director back in April, and we had discussed several issues. And the legislation that was passed did not incorporate some of the very basic concerns that we had. So, appreciate that the mayor's asked to table it, and we'll be happy to discuss this with the individuals that we need to going forward. So, I just want to say thank you very much.
And then information will come back to council, and if you have requests.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the information. All right. Ordinance 112 is an ordinance authorizing, amending ordinance 118, construction and construction engineering services for the Richland Bridge over Coats Run project. And this is project number 321, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
President Nisley, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 011219.
Second.
And this is to, well, like the title said, it's amending the original ordinance for the bridge on Richland Avenue over Coats Run. The construction costs ran over, but this is not going to tag our coffers. In fact, ODOT had additional dollars from turnpike credits. And so they were able to give that to us. And so we're going to have those overages that were mostly related to weather taken care of.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 11219. Any other comments or questions from council members, staff, administration, or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11319 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a bridge repair project within the corporation boundary on State Route 56. This is PID number 99578, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Cottis.
President Nisley, I would like to make a motion to adopt 011319.
Second.
And this is just a standard LPA agreement, which allows ODOT to do work within the city limits. This bridge in particular is over the railroad tracks close to southeast Bedbridge on State Route 56. Believe the work is going to happen in the spring, and of course, ODOT will be responsible for 100% of the construction costs.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 11319. A comment from Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, President Nisley. Briefly, I just wanted to acknowledge thank you to the mayor, as well as the fire chief, that acknowledged that this will also include a widening of the bridge. It can be a little precarious on a bicycle and motorcycle, which I've traveled, so I think that is a safety concern. Appreciate the information on that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council, administration, audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is passed. Ordinance 11419 is an ordinance repealing ordinance 2519, amending Athens City Code Title 17, Chapter 17.01, municipal income tax, to add Section .17.01.066, election to be subject to Ohio Revised Code, Section 718.0 through 718.95, and replacing it to incorporate the Ohio Revised Code sections by reference. And this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 114-19.
Second.
You know, the title that you read pretty much sums up the entire ordinance, other than the breakdown of the various sections and some definitions. Everyone has a copy on their hard drive, so you can read it there. Otherwise, well, you'll have to listen to me drone on some very, very boring numbers.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 11419. Any other comments or questions from council, administration, or audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11519 is an ordinance amending... Ordinance 11519 is an ordinance amending the Athens City Code Title 17, Chapter 17.01 Municipal Income Tax, Section 17.01.03, definitions, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion that we adopt 11519. The title, again, describes what the ordinance is for. We're just bringing our own city code into line with the tax code of the state of Ohio. They're changing various definitions such as pensions and retirement and so on, and this brings it up. So now we're standardized with the state.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of ordinance 11519. Any other comments or questions from council, administration, or audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is passed. 11619 is an ordinance amending the 2019 Appropriations Ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 11619.
Second.
Thank you. This is short and sweet. Just to remind everyone that we're going to amend the Appropriation Ordinance 14018, $10,000 to Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 100, for year-end personal services, and $360,000 to Medical Fund 866, transaction code 300, to provide for medical claims to the year end and increasing the total appropriations by said amount.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approving 11619. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11719 is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce 2019 year-end appropriations and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 11719.
Second.
We do this on an annual basis. This is probably the most favorite ordinance the auditor likes us to pass. And the title says it all. We're essentially doing the end-of-the-year housekeeping of mondays that are spent or unspent.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of 11719. Any comments or questions from council or administration or the audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11819 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contract with Findlay Fire Equipment Company, Inc., to purchase a fire pumper truck and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 11819.
Second.
We always like to get new fire trucks. We will be authorizing the Service Safety Director to expand up to $750,000 from Capital Improvement Fund 8580, transaction code 500, for said purchase. I've received communication from the Service Safety Director that they'd like to proceed with this as quickly as possible so that we can get the greatest possible discount before the end of the year.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for approval of 11819. Any other comments or questions from council, administration, or the audience?
Have we approached the university about contributing?
I believe there's a continuing agreement.
Yes.
That is still in existence.
Correct. I believe, and this is where I might lean on the auditor.
$50,000?
I believe that there's two more years on the current agreement with Ohio University. But there is conversations that I have with President Dwayne Nellis about continuing this on and possibly extending it beyond five years, but that conversation is yet to be done. I think it would be great if we could reach a longer-term agreement as opposed to five-year tranches.
Yeah, I mean, it would help us plan also.
It would.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for the comments and questions. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 11919 is an ordinance authorizing disposable of a 1997 fire pumper truck no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nysley. I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 119-19.
Second.
Thank you. Quite simply, this authorizes the city's Service Safety Director to dispose of said pumper truck through auction, sealed bid, or trade-in. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 11919. Any other comments or questions from council, administration, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
We now have three ordinances for second reading. And usually what we do here, unless we're going to suspend on one of them, is we read the title. And I will pause briefly to see if there are any comments or questions. Ordinance 12019 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 7, Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace. I have no comments or questions, I'll move on. Ordinance 12119 is an ordinance rezoning portions of Court State Carpenter and Fern Streets from a B3 zone to a B2D zone, introduced by Councilmember Fall. Any comments or questions? Okay. Ordinance 12219 is an ordinance amending the 2019 Appropriation Ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Any comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to the next one. Ordinance 12319 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $150,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes issued for the purpose of paying part of the cost of design, engineering of the water treatment plant facilities improvements, which is project number 307, and declaring an emergency. And that's introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules for 12319.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that these notes are due by December 4th.
Okay.
So in order to get all the paperwork necessarily done through our bond council, we have to get something done tonight.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Reisner.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 12319.
Second.
And the reasons are, as the title reads, and for the reasons for the suspension of the rules.
Okay. And we have a motion and second. Any other comments or questions from council, admin, or audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. 12419 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $170,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued to pay part of the cost of improvements to this municipality's wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 12419.
Second.
And the reason is, as in the previous ordinance, the notes are due December of the 4th, and we have to move to get the notes in order.
Okay. So, and did I hear a second? Yeah, okay. We have a motion and second then for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 12419.
Second.
And we need to pay our debts.
Need to pay it. Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 12519 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to hire a water labor supervisor at a pay rate of up to 40% through the assigned pay grade. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I hate to do this to you again, but I'd like to suspend the rules for 12519.
Okay. Second.
The reason for suspension is slightly different. In this case, the person in question is already in that new pay grade position, and they're not being paid at the rate that was agreed upon when that person was brought in.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second for suspending the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Rules have been suspended, Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 12519.
Second.
And again, we need to get this person correctly in the correct pay grade.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 12519. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance has been approved. We now have ordinances for first reading. 12619 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 7, Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, to add Section 7.05.03.1 Residential Parking Permit. And this is introduced by Councilmember Kotzis.
President Nysley, thank you. We discussed this in committee, that this pilot program was coming to an end towards the end of this year. And so we've decided, after I had discussions with Captain Harvey and of course, the mayor also mentioned that this was, it was time to take this from a pilot program and actually add it into our city code. So that's the first change that we're doing, changing a pilot to an actual codified part of our code. And then the second thing, the only other thing, all the streets are staying the same, and this is for the 72-hour parking permit. So all the streets are the same. The only thing that's changing within there is that the fee, the annual license fee, application fee, is going from $25 to $35.
So we have this read for the first time. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, President Nysley. I just wanted to thank citizen input on this. Ms. Kornansky, I'm not sure if she's still here or not, but she was instrumental in supporting and challenging the city to look at this policy and welcome the idea of this process. So, thank you.
Great, good. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Grace?
I just wondered if there have been any requests to add additional streets to this program? And if that's something that, before we finalize this beyond being just a pilot program, if we should consider expanding it to cover other parts of the city?
If I can speak to that, the streets right now that are selected have less off-street parking. And so that's kind of the, you know, the bellwether. That's the identifier that shows us that there is a need for that 72-hour. Now, of course, we can, you know, this is going to go through a couple reads, so we need to wait and see if there's other people that do come forward. My understanding is with Captain Harvey that there were one or two requests, but based on that off-street parking, it wasn't deemed as necessarily a spot where they felt like it was appropriate as what these streets are being listed as.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for the question. Okay, any other questions or comments? Joan?
Joan Kornansky, and I have the clipboard. I don't know what to do with that.
Oh, we'll get it, we'll get it after the meeting. Just don't take it home.
I won't take it home.
Which is what I do.
So I have been communicating with Councilmember Kotzis about this. And through our discussion, I think that the way this is being rolled out as a permanent parking permit system is very appreciated by many of the people I've spoken to that have been using it. So I want to thank you and council members and also the mayor, who initially assisted me in getting this whole project going. So I hope it goes forward as is, with no glitches, and that's it.
Thanks for all your work. Okay. All right, no other comments. We'll move on to 12719. This is an ordinance repealing Athens City Code Title 7, Traffic Code, Chapter 7.06 Tow Truck Regulations, and amending to remove Chapter 7.05 Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.32 through 7.05.35, and 7.09.99, T1 and 2, the penalties, introduced by Councilmember Kotzis, who can explain it.
President Nysley, thank you. Yes, towing, we've been talking about this for probably closing in on a year. And so basically, just to kind of get everybody to understand what this piece of code is in charge of, it is towing specifically on private property lots that are signed by towing companies. So if, so like our police department will call and maybe issue a tow within the city right of way, doesn't apply to this. So currently, right now, a tow from our public right of way is $129, and that is a fee that is set by PUCO, and that's state level. And so what we have here is we have a piece of code that has been in existence since about 2003, and it sets the price at $50. And so towing companies at this point are charged a lesser amount than what they would be. They, according to Athens City Code, towing companies can only charge $50 towing from those private lots. So based on a legal opinion that we got from Lisa Eliason, we are, this is something that we have to strike from our code because we can't enforce this.
Any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember McGee?
I would beg to differ with my colleague's interpretation of this for several reasons. One is, and I think this whole thing is nonsense, it comes down to, the first issue is preemption, whether we're going to let the state and PUCO preempt the city's right to regulate the towing fee to start with. This city and this council has stood out time and time again, objecting to the right of the state to preempt issues. However, now that we have an issue that would basically impact the student population of Athens more than any other population, we can turn a blind eye to the effect of this. We have Student Senate, as well as a number of students having petitions to council, asking that if we do increase the towing rates, that we do so within what everyone else considers a reasonable fee of perhaps $75. This ordinance would, again, basically emasculate any option of the city to control its own destiny with the towing fee rate. Again, we're just giving it to the state and saying, you said it. We forget that often those tows that are out of the city of Athens involve some mileage involved, especially if you're perhaps in the city of Columbus and your vehicle is being towed five or 10 miles around the city. That may justify a larger fee. In the city of Athens, where these tows are a much shorter distance, I really question whether the population of Athens and the citizens of Athens should be subjected to this kind of shell game where we're basically increasing a towing rate by saying, oh, PUCO is doing it, so we should just go along. As far as the city law director's opinion on that, I've talked to her as well. And we both understand the fact that the city has no dog in this hunt, so to speak, that if there is in fact an issue between a towing company and a citizen, and the city council has approved a lower fee, then it's up to the court to determine whether that's appropriate or whether the PUCO fee would apply. But what we're doing now is cutting the legs out from under the opportunity of the citizens to actually argue that it should be a lesser fee. So I want that to be really clear, that I think there is a dispute in both the nature of this ordinance itself and the interpretation by the law director as enunciated by my colleague. Thank you.
All right. Law Director Eliason, yes, please.
So the president of council, President Nysley, asked me to write an opinion on the charges that are in the Athens City Code. And that's what Mr. McGee, Councilmember McGee, is speaking to. This ordinance This ordinance before you actually repeals the whole section on tow truck regulations. And I think that's as a result of a conversation that the police chief may have had with the mayor, president of council, someone here, that, or maybe he appeared and stated that the tow truck regulations haven't been enforced since 2004. We could have licensed them, but we don't license them, and we haven't done that since 2004. It was his opinion that the entire section should be repealed, and that's what this legislation does. What President Nisley asked me was to look at 706-17, which was charges, and I actually have a three-page opinion on that. And in the end, there are two types of tows, and under 4513-60 and 601. 60 is tow from residential, private residential or private agricultural property. And under 601, under the revised code, it's a private towaway zone. And I think that's mostly what we're talking about here, is the private towaway zones. But in examining all of this, it's actually my opinion that if the city wants to regulate towing fees under 4513-60 from private residential or private agricultural property, we can regulate that. But according to my research and my analysis, and looking at this very deeply, that we can't under 4513-601, which is the private towaway zones. And that's very specific under the revised code as to what you have to do. You have to have a certain size sign, you have to have certain things listed on there. And I agree with Mr. McGee, he and I have talked about this, Councilmember McGee, and any dispute as to a towing fee is definitely between the tow company and the person who's being towed. And there have been at least two lawsuits filed in small claims court, where the person towed actually filed suit against the towing company.
Thank you.
And if anyone's interested in the memorandum, I think it was provided to everyone.
It was.
It was.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this first reading? Councilmember Crowell?
I would just say that outside of having any legal knowledge of, I've read through Law Director Eliason's opinion, and hearing Mr. McGee's opinion as a legal authority, I looked at all this and was concerned about our home rules, what we're constantly talking about, having the ability to make our own, and I couldn't find, and, you know, how this issue didn't come down to a similar home rule situation. And so I agree with Mr. McGee in terms of, you know, how we should go forward with this. I don't know what the answer is, I don't know it from a legal opinion, but I feel like we should be able to set our own fees for this issue. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Kotsas?
And so, and I guess, you know, and the thing that, I'm just a, I am a fan of property rights, and I do believe that people have the ability to police their property and have this issue taken care of, if it becomes an issue. And I don't understand why, if a police officer or somebody from the city calls and has it towed from a right-of-way, it's one price, but if a private citizen calls and has it towed from another place, we're going to be able to control that specific part of the transaction? That one, that just confuses me.
Councilmember Reisner?
Well, what I don't understand, or I'm trying to wrap my head around, is that we're talking about the correction of an illegal act. The car, the vehicle is parked illegally on private property, it should not be there. And the owner of the property or their manager is using the law to have that vehicle removed. So I don't really quite see this as a cut-and-dried home rule. I mean, are we using home rule as a way of saying, well, you know, it's really not that big a deal? You know? Why should we be so concerned about it? I mean, are we enforcing the law or not?
And Mr. McGee, and I both agree that there's no way to enforce it, that any dispute is between the person who's towed and the towing company, and that dispute would have to be decided in a court of law, like small claims court. We don't regulate, we don't regulate the tow companies. We don't have an ordinance, well, actually licensed, we don't license them. So, and they haven't been licensed in Athens since 2004.
Would that be a vehicle, to be able to enforce these sort of issues? Maybe we're looking at the wrong tool at this point.
But we had the previous information from the police chief.
Right.
And I would assume that since they haven't enforced it since 2004, there isn't any interest in them enforcing it now. But maybe we shouldn't assume. Mayor Patterson?
I have a general question of counsel that no one may be able to answer, but that is, are these tows that take place on private property, is someone calling in and requesting the vehicle to be towed, or is it that there's tow truck companies driving around and looking for vehicles that may or may not be improperly parked and therefore towing them? I did have a conversation with a cab driver who indicated to me something I thought was rather disturbing, and that was the number of cases in which they were taking someone out to the towing company to get their vehicle, and again, it's anecdotal or hearsay, that the conversation that took place was one in which they had no idea that they had improperly parked themselves somewhere. But my question again is, is there a way that there can be documentation as to whether there's been a call for service to have the vehicle removed, or whether they are just vehicles that are being moved? I don't know if there's a difference between those two?
There are two separate, again, under the revised code, under 4513-60, which is removal from private residential or private agricultural. So let's say that somebody parks in your driveway, and they're not permitted to park there, they blocked your driveway. So you would call the police, and after four hours, then the police would order, basically order the tow. So that's one section. And that's the one that, when you're reading the revised code, I'm not saying it makes a lot of sense, but when you read it, it does indicate that the city, if the city has established a vehicle removal fee, that we could do that. The other type is under 4513-601, which is the private towaway zones. Those are the ones that are all around the city, where you see the signs that are posted for someone who's created a private lot. And in that situation, it's clearly posted, and I suppose if the owner calls, and I don't know if tow companies drive around and look, but if the owner of that private lot calls, then a tow truck company comes. I mean, it's very complicated under the higher revised code, in that a tow company who doesn't follow all the regulations that are set forth in revised code could actually charge criminally with a violation.
Okay. Councilmember McGee?
I understand that we're in a rush to get to the Bailey stuff, and I just want to answer this. I mean, you have undoubtedly seen the cars towed from over by the Athens Historical Society and the private lots, where nobody's parking at night, and some poor parent comes in for Parents Weekend and gets their car towed, or some tourist comes in and gets their car towed, and leaves with nothing but distaste for this city. That's called predatory towing. It's not because someone has called, it's because somebody has said, if somebody parks in our lot, you tow them out. And I understand Pete's concern with private property rights, but I also understand the effect on the city to allow that. And some enlightened states, or more enlightened states, have even declared that to be an outlawed practice. So let's make it real clear, what we are talking about is the right of the city to regulate predatory towing in the sense of they can't charge a certain amount, which would be ultimately, ultimately determined by the court whether the city can do this or not. But again, we're giving up our right if we do it. Thank you. And I'll keep my mouth shut.
Okay. This ordinance has been read for the first time. Thank you. Ordinance 128-19 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to participate in the Uptown Special Improvement District, known as a CID, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't think this will be quite as controversial as the previous topic. I hope. Allow me to read the pertinent sections. Whereas the city of Athens is supportive of efforts by property owners in the Uptown area to make public improvements, and whereas the city of Athens would like to be a partner in the Uptown Special Improvement District, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to participate in the Uptown Special Improvement District and to pay the assessed front linear footage for the armory, parking garage, and city building within the SID, CID, Special Improvement District boundary, as outlined in Resolution 09-19.
Any comments or questions? Mayor Patterson?
Just so there's some clarity with council and the audience, anyone watching tonight, is that the, there will be the formation of a board for the Special Improvement District, and then there's the General Assembly, and that is all of the property owners within the CID, of which City Council had a threereading resolution to adopt those petitions to create the CID. The Board and the General Assembly will decide upon what that price is per linear foot, but to give council an idea as to what that could look like and where that money could come from, if it were $15 a linear foot that was decided upon, and again, nothing has been decided upon at this point in time, that would translate for the armory, the parking garage, as well as the city building, roughly $4,500 to be a payer into the Special Improvement District. And one of the things that we could, we could, one of the fund lines that we could use is the Athens Enhancement Fund to help pay for that particular cost associated with the CID. Again, as a reminder, Ohio University, universities, state universities, municipal buildings, as well as churches are exempt within CIDs. Ohio University has opted in to be a payer for the Special Improvement District, as I hope that council will agree as well, that we be partners in this endeavor to create a better-looking Uptown area within that CID footprint. Councilmember Paul has been involved in the CID process for quite some time, almost as long as I have, and I think has a firm understanding as to how the CID works.
Okay. Councilmember Reisner?
Have you thought of a catchy name yet for this?
We have, although I guess it would require either the Board or the General Assembly to vote on it, but I think it just should be called the Uptown Special Improvement District.
How about El Cid?
El Cid, okay. You tell me what the E and the L stands for, and we can make that happen.
Well, it's Arabic for judge.
Because there's a court in the middle of it, you're using that as a name of that.
Well, there's that.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right, thank you. Then that's been read for the first time. Well, now move on to announcements and other business. We have an appointment to the Environment and Sustainability Commission, and I believe Councilmember Crowell has this.
Thank you very much. I would like to make a motion that we approve Abby Rajum to the student position on the Environment and Sustainability Commission.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Rajum is a Master's of Science in Environmental Studies student at Ohio University. She is the graduate student for the Sustainable Infrastructure Hub, and has worked on AEP Renewable Energy Education Program. She's a one of its research scholar, she's held a NASA internship, and we are very excited to have her join us. Thank you.
Great. So we have a motion and second for approving the appointment of Abby Rajum to the Environment and Sustainability Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, she's been appointed, and thank you.
Thank you.
We now have, if I could have a motion to accept the auditor's report for October 2019. This was distributed to council members last week, I believe.
So moved?
Okay. We have a motion and second for the approval of the auditor's reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The auditor's report's been accepted. If I could also have a motion to accept the October 2019 credit card transactions. Those have been received by council and reviewed.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the approval of those credit card transactions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. And we now have an item to remove from the table, Ordinance 110-19.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to remove from the table, Ordinance 110-19.
Second.
Reasons I gave two weeks ago to table the ordinance was to gather more information, and we charged the mayor to look into that. I believe he's come back with a report to council.
I don't have a physical report to provide to council. I did contact the individual that, our former city prosecutor, Jesse Branner, had recommended that I reach out to an individual, his name is Nick Zangali. I've spoken to Nick. I also asked him before coming here tonight that it was okay with he and his company to go ahead and speak on this to council, and he said that was absolutely okay in terms of what our communication was. Nick works for a company called Nova Gratic and Company, LLP, out of Cleveland, Ohio. Again, as I mentioned, Prosecutor Branner recommended that I speak with this individual. It took us a little while, we were playing tag, phone tag back and forth, but when we finally got together, I made contact with him on November 8th. I also, he said he would be more than happy to look at the information provided by Quantified Ventures. Prior to that, I had spoken to Seth Brown and asked for him to send me a memorandum, a summary of project visitation and economic impacts for the Bailey system. About four days later, I received a call back from Nick, and he, what he informed me was that he looked it over, and he said, on the financial side, it was pretty straightforward in terms of what the city of Athens would be paying for debt service as we moved forward on this. He really didn't see any problems with that, and nothing looked unusual to him or out of the ordinary. The one thing that he did say, though, and this is why it was a phone conversation, is that his firm doesn't necessarily look at impact development projects, in particular outdoor recreation impact projects. And so due to that, he wasn't able to comment on that in any detail in terms of the estimated number of riders, the estimated amount of income generated by the trail system unto itself. But again, he did comment on our ability to pay the $1.5 or $1.2 million if we were to venture into this, which I feel strongly that we should, for a number of reasons. The level of unsolicited emails that I have received from others, as I mentioned, the International Hall of Fame writer who received his International Mountain Biking Hall of Fame induction based upon advocacy work in talking about things, as I described earlier in my communication to council. Hopefully you've read through this email and see that his opinion is not too dissimilar from others who have spoken here, or one from a number of people. Jeff Morgan has spoken to this, a number of people have spoken to this, who I believe have a high level of understanding when it comes to, you know, finances for something of this nature. I don't know if council has done this or not. I did. For last Sunday, I decided to take a walk up into the Bailey Trail System and see it for myself, at least that which has been developed. And it is, in my words... And it is, in my words, it is impressive to look at and see, again, something that council may or may not be aware of, which I was made aware of in being up there, is that there will be a, and I don't know what the regulations are for having a loop for adaptive cycling up there, but that was something that was unbeknownst to me. I didn't realize that there was going to be, for people with disabilities, an adaptive track feature or trail feature up there for people to engage in. I viewed that as an immensely powerful statement for what this trail system will ultimately become. I did receive an email earlier, and I asked Don McCarthy from Wayne National Forest if I could bring this up with council, and she said, that's why I sent it to you. So thank you. And basically, this is in reference to the power grant, if I'm not mistaken, in terms of the funding that will be coming in for the Appalachian Regional Commission grant that Rural Action was successful in bringing in, in that $90,000 of that could be used for an executive director for the first year as we move forward. I share that with you, and I appreciate you sending me that this way, sending this to me.
Yes.
I, I find it really compelling that there's an excess of $4 million already garnered for this particular trail system as we move forward. So when I think of the city investing 1.2 million dollars over a number of years into something that I really feel strongly about, and this came up earlier tonight, by the way. It came up earlier when we were talking about the rezoning of North Port Street, and you heard it, and I've been tracking it for some time as well, and that is the student population nationally, but I really don't care nationally. I care about the city of Athens when I look at the, the decrease in student enrollment and what that does to our own local economy, and trust me, it has an impact on our local economy. And with that, what we've got to do and be a little brave on doing this, and that is, we need to look forward and think of other economic development opportunities for our community, for, you know, this would also impact the region, certainly the county. So I, I just, I know that isn't the, the full report that you wanted to hear, council, from, from me reaching out to someone to get a third party view on, on their opinion on this particular project. But again, when I'm looking at, at ways in which we need to think wisely about how we do diversify our economy and expand revenue coming in, you know, tourism, and looking at some of these numbers that have been put forward, I would also contend that, that what is, the numbers that we're seeing in the Quantified Ventures, and it's not just looking at what Quantified Ventures has put forward, it's also looking at the, the letters that I have received from people saying, these numbers are extremely conservative in terms of what a trail system that's 88 miles in length would bring in, in comparison to others that are out there that are of lesser length, you know, trail systems that are 40 miles in trails, or 30 miles in trails, or whatever. There are not a whole lot of 88 mile mountain biking trail systems that are developed, and this would be one such trail system. And the other thing that I was thinking this through, and I want council to ponder over this when it comes to impacts, ways in which you can really make a statement and drive things out there and ensure that you would have a large number of tourists coming early in the game as opposed to over time. Imagine this. Imagine our, our, our bike path in the city of Athens, and think about how long it has taken for the bike path to be the size that it is now with the Columbus Road Bike Path Center and the bridge and the Northwest Bike Path Center, which still isn't done yet, not even close, but the expansion to the east, so on and so forth. And imagine how many years, it's taken decades to do that, and a lot of slow schlogging at getting grants and the grant money to come in so you can fund additions to that. Now imagine that being built out in two years or less, and the impact that that would have made on the city of Athens to where we would have, again, this is my own speculation on that, we would likely have thousands and thousands of people coming to Athens just to check out this new bike path that's in the city of Athens. Well, that's history now, so that's not the case. But to think, you know, whether it's a long run at developing the Bailey Trail System or a shorter impact run at getting it built out more quickly, I think that we would see a return on investment at a much more rapid rate than we would if we were to go the long game. So there's my two cents on that, my opinion on it, but also that of Nick Zangali from the firm that I reached out to, to get their opinion.
Okay. Law Director Elias, and I want to make sure that I'm doing this in the correct order, which I didn't do earlier.
We haven't had a vote yet.
We haven't had a vote yet.
But a motion and a second.
Correct. And so, do we have other, we can entertain?
Our rules don't allow for that.
Okay.
But it's going to be in your discretion, I think. The mayor gave an explanation as to why, I mean, it was tabled, tabled and at the request of council for the mayor to make further inquiry. Motion second, he's given an explanation as to what happened.
And there's not debate permitted on that, nor comment then permitted on that either, so we need to do the vote now and then take the next steps.
Right.
If there are any, okay. So at the moment, we have a motion to remove this ordinance from the table, and we have a second for it. And so I would call for the vote. All those in favor of removing this from the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So it has been removed from the table.
Thank you, Madam President. What I would like to do now, I believe I'm permitted, is pass out to council what I believe are some necessary amendments to this original ordinance based upon feedback, I believe, from our bond council. The idea is to, does the mayor have a copy? Do you have a copy, Mayor?
No, to acknowledge.
Thank you. Anything else going this way? Those sections that are highlighted in yellow and in bold are the amendments to the original Let me read these. Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement through December 31, 2040, to provide financial support from the city transient gas tax, guest tax paid into the general fund to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, ORCA, or Regional Council of Government, COG, for funding the Bailey's trail system along with other recreational activities. This is a proposed amendment, provided that the proceeds of such tax are sufficient, legally available, and lawfully appropriated for the purpose. The ordinance continues, said authorization shall be contained upon an agreement for the same level of financial support through December 31, 2040 by the County of Athens, as said copy of agreement attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2 is amended as follows. Should the Port Authority Board or any other entity showing a willingness to issue bonds or loans for the fixed investment amount being considered, then the mayor, as an ORCA Board member, would be required to seek additional legislative approval. In the agreement itself, there is an amendment. City agrees, paragraph 2, furthermore, is now amended as follows. Five years after the effective date of this agreement, it continues, the city agrees to pay an additional amount based on outside performance measures amended by, approved by city council. And then it continues, that leads to an increase in the amount of the transient gas tax not to exceed $35,000 of the receipts earned after November 1, 2019, to ORCA 20 days after received by the city. I believe these amendments tighten council's control over funding and any other investment action that ORCA might want to do. The mayor being or represented there would then have to come to council and seek approval. So it could not be done by fiat or, or decision by that board. So I, I propose these amendments and...
I'll second.
We have a second? Okay.
So we have a motion and second for abending ordinance 11019, and we can allow comments about the amendments. Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
Okay. Thank you, President Reisner. So Mr. Reisner, section 2...
But Councilman Reisner.
Sorry. Councilman Reisner. Should the Port Authority Board or any other entity show a willingness to issue bonds? I don't understand exactly what you're saying here. I'm all for, you know, legislative approval, but are these bonds outside of what they already are considering doing, or you're, you're saying that if the Port Authority moves forward in issuing bonds or loans, then this comes back to us for approval? Is that what that says?
Well, let's, as an example, the Council of Governments issues a bond for 3.4 million dollars, or, yeah, that'd be, no, 2.4. Our share is 1.2, the county's 1.2. That bond goes through. It sells out, the money's raised. Somewhere along the line, ORCA says, you know, we need, we need more funds. Let's go back to the bond market. Let's do it again. Let's see what we can raise. This is, if you're going to try that, okay, and you want the city to underwrite it as we did before, you're going to have to come back and say to us, this is what we want to do, and we need to do, to do that, you will have to get our approval. Otherwise, it's not going to happen. You'll have to find some other source to underwrite it. Is that clear? Sort of?
I, I feel like your statement was more clear than, than what's written here.
Probably.
But...
The showing of the shell.
I think the showing is what throws me off. I think it should read, should the Port Authority Board or any other entity show a willingness to issue bonds or loans for the fixed investment amount being considered, then the mayor, as an ORCA Board member, would be required to seek additional legislative approval. I was trying to find the active verb there.
Because the showing could be interpreted as just a possibility of it.
Right.
But shows...
My brain trust has let me down here. I would go along with that, that helps.
Is that a friendly amendment to the amendment? Okay.
And again, I said I'm not a legal expert. Maybe I'm just getting into legalese here.
No, your, your grammar is...
May I continue here?
Yes, please.
Page 2, if I understand correctly, the amendment to, under the city agrees to, number 2, we are adding, you're proposing that we add five years after the effective date of this agreement. So if I understand correctly, we would be agreeing to $90,000 a year for, for the first five years, and it would not change for the first five years.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And then, after five years, looking at those outside performance measures, then ORCA could come back to council and ask for approval to increase that amount.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Assuming that the performance is, is going the long way they want.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And we would, right, be the...
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Paul?
When we had our discussion last week, or two weeks ago, people seemed, I understand that people who've been working on this for years would get a bit upset, and, but for us, especially now with the information changing and everything, that we've only had this for a little bit, and trying to get your mind around all of this information to make sure that the city is, as council member, me doing my due diligence. And I think that the thing that was, for me, the most difficult, I mean, I think that from a, from a tourism perspective, an economic development perspective, ecotourism, you know, it's a gem of a project. But for 20 years, that was the, the point that, for me, was really difficult, because just this year, we got hit by this idea that the state legislature is going to preempt our ability to raise taxes from people who work in the city. And that could be a huge amount of money in the future. Who knows what happens after, like, 2020? So for this, to be able to have the legislative approval, to have the, the Board, the, the council be able to revisit it at increments, helps to satisfy a lot of the problems that I've had with it. And that also Sarah Mars put forward from her letter, Economic Development Commission person, and some of her issues. So I appreciate that we could take this time out, and everybody take a deep breath, and be able to make it so that it is, as a model, enthusiastically supported by the city.
Councilmember McGee?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Brown, who's in the audience, I believe, for having spoken to us on the phone and having clarified some issues. As far as this particular amendment, and I believe that's what I should be addressing, only I think the amendments are well taken in this particular issue. I still have concern with the overall agreement, that part of it, which says we can terminate it basically by giving us notice and paying for about a year because of, simply because of the presentation that you had given where your statement says, the city can, quote, "close out" the contract by assuming its portion of the bond through, through traditional debt. So I understand that's not necessarily the amendment, but it's something that I'm concerned with perhaps what we're doing is saying in this, all parties agree, we can terminate the contract, but what does terminate mean? Does that mean close out? Does it mean get out? And I think it perhaps needs some clarification on that issue. So I would just suggest that to the council member that I would like to know if this is, close out means we're still responsible until we assume it through traditional means. Thank you.
Was that a question to me, or?
No. No, I think it was a comment.
No, no, I, like yourself, I appreciated Mr. Brown giving us his time and answering our questions as thoroughly as he did, and certainly helped a lot, I believe, to clarify some issues. I believe the auditor was pleased with the way things went, so... Does the auditor have any comment on these? Might as well get to everybody while we're here.
Sure. Since I did buzz in on the conference call, it was a lot of good information, a lot of good questions asked by council members who were there, and it was just more specific information that we asked, and I, I also was in on engaging Dennis Schwalle to review it, and I think the amendments are very important, and so, no, I don't have any issues with the way it's being worded or presented or anything else.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you. I guess I just have one question. It is related to the amendment in the sense that number 2 says, five years after the effective date of this agreement, the top of the page calls this an agreement. In each of the first few sections, it's called an agreement, and then at the end, it says, any party may terminate this contract. Can I assume that contract and agreement are synonymous?
That should probably be amended to also reflect agreement.
That should probably be amended to also reflect agreement, since we use the term agreement.
Thank you.
And could that be considered a minor, we're making it parallel language? Okay.
Where's the word contract last seen?
All parties agree, very end.
Page 2.
So it shall read, all parties agree, any party may terminate this agreement in accordance with Section 4 of Exhibit A.
And I would just ask council to consider that that might answer Mr. McGee's question.
I don't think it does. But I appreciate your effort.
Again, I'm not a legal expert, but if this is the agreement, and the end of this says that any party in this agreement may terminate this agreement, and the agreement says that we're paying $90,000 a year, terminating this agreement would terminate that clause, wouldn't it not?
If I may just suggest, you might look at who's signing the agreement. It's the members of Orca, but then we also have the issue of who's holding the bond and how does that interrelate with the city's responsibility on the bond, with the city's responsibility to Orca? So it is a little more complex than one would perhaps assume at first, and I think it needs clarified, but I'll be gone, so, you know, it'll be someone else's spot.
No, you'll be here still.
No, you'll be here.
You don't get to go.
It's your party gift.
Councilmember Grace.
I just want to voice that I am with Member McGee on concern about, while we can leave this agreement, this does not remove the city from Orca, and if, who is underwriting the bond, you know, sort of what I would like to hear from somebody is, what is the terrible worst-case scenario? Horrible weather for years, but a change, suddenly there is a drop-off in tourists that come to southeast Ohio for whatever reason. Something happens, the trail is not financially successful. What happens to the city and Orca's financial commitment? Who, how does that work out in terms of the obligation for the bond? And that, so if, I think, I want to voice that I, well, I see we can get out of this agreement. I don't know, and it hasn't been effectively communicated to me, how that totally alleviates the city's financial obligations in this endeavor.
So another question posed.
And a...
Do we have an expert witness in the audience who would like to address that question?
Fair. Madam President, Council, Mayor Patterson, thank you. In terms of answering your question directly...
And you are.
I am Seth Brown from Quantified Ventures. I'm not from Athens, I am from Washington DC, but I'm also standing and representing many people from around the country that are watching this right now, including from Seattle, outside of Oakland, Colorado, Boston, and Washington DC, based on what they think that you guys are potentially about to vote on. I'm excited about the amendments. I think that they're adding a lot of clarity for those who were trying to understand what the difference between the contract that would be supporting the revenue that goes to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia and the financing of which that revenue is being underwritten for the financing. And I haven't analyzed every single detail yet because the amendments were just introduced, but it's my understanding that if there ever was a scenario in which the financing was requiring some change to the way the city is providing money to Orca, it would have to go back to the council for approval based on that. From what I heard, what you just read, was that if Orca or the Athens Port Authority, any such authority, was going to be entering into a bond, the terms of that bond would be given back to council, along with the evaluation criteria at which five years the numbers would change. And so it sounds like there's greater transparency and oversight from the city council's role into what they would be providing to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia.
But to getting to Councilwoman Grace's point, that in case of a worst-case scenario where a new ice age strikes and the trail is shut down, what financial obligation does the city still have towards Orca, Port Authority, or anybody else?
So based on that ordinance, in the worst-case scenario where no one goes to the trail, you'd be paying $90,000 a year until you decide by active legislation or by active ordinance to leave the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia.
So if we left Orca, withdrew, our obligation therefore ends in terms of financing? We never make another payment, and we can't be sued for not doing it?
As of the way it is written right now, that is the case. I think if there was, within the negotiations of how the bond was being issued, there was some change to that, that would have to be brought back to council. That's my understanding.
Quick question?
Yes, Councilmember Paul.
Have Lisa Elias and our law director been able to look at these in depth?
I've looked at this, and as far as the Section 2 amendment, because I do recognize that the one section says we can withdraw, and I think that Section 2 does address the fact that, or that perhaps Orca is going to seek financing either through bonds or private financing. And I think the concern here is what will our obligation be? As Mr. Brown said, $90,000 a year, if we decide we don't want to do it, we can get out. However, there's an increased obligation if there's financing. And I think that's the concern here of council, and I think that this section does address it, that if Orca reaches the point where they decide that they are going to seek financing, then, or if Port Authority decides they're going to issue bonds, then the mayor has to come back to council. And then at that point, you know, we're going to know what it is.
Yeah, exactly.
And know what the obligation is.
Okay.
So yes, I've been involved in that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Seth.
Good question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to acknowledge publicly that my support for this is still unwavering, and I don't have the same questions as some of my peers do. I'm supportive of the process, and I do value the mindfulness that went into the amendments. I just want to make sure that I'm clear in understanding that the transient guest tax is how this would be paid for. Correct?
Correct.
So it's not necessarily tax dollars from the citizens of Athens, but our guests that would be visiting the community that would be helping pay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grace.
Just to the point about the transient guest tax dollars, they are currently part of our general fund, so it's, yes, it is tax dollars being paid by visitors, but it is dollars that we are currently using to pay other expenses in the city. So for our general fund to continue to be able to pay those expenses, we're going to have to add revenue from another stream. Just, and to that point, it's not, it's not a, this pot of money that's currently sitting unused. It is money that is being used right now.
Auditor Heck, do you want to offer a brief comment? And I know we're going to go into committee also to discuss this next week, the budget.
Sure. Member Grace is correct. We are required by the Ohio Revise Code to put half of our transient guest tax money into the general fund for general obligations, which means we can spend that money on whatever we need to. And so we've been doing that, and so, yes, we're talking about almost, say, $100,000 less in our general fund revenue. However, we have discussed that, and we have a plan. And so every so often, and I'd say an average of every two years, council changes the income tax allocation, or tax mix, as we call it, because you have about 86% of the tax revenue that you can put wherever you want. We've got about a half a dozen funds that get it, most of it goes into the general fund. And so what the plan is, to reduce the allocation for the street fund, which is currently 19% by 1%, which will effectively put about $129,000 into the general fund to replace the $90,000 that we're paying, up to $125,000. But the other question that we are sure people would want to know is, how does that affect the street funding? And so next year, we, well, everybody knows there's been an increase passed for the gas tax revenue in Ohio, and we are expecting about $187,000 in new revenue from that. So the general fund, or so the street fund will have that, their access minus, you know, the money that we will be reducing in their tax mix. So they will still have, you know, at least an extra $57,000 to $60,000 in new money for road repair, et cetera. Do you have any questions?
Mayor Patterson. And Mayor Patterson, did you want to make a comment about it?
Thank you. You know, I have been mulling over this with the auditor for a while now, with this increase in the gasoline tax and what the city will be receiving. And just to kind of remind council that when I took office, we were paving and repairing about six miles, a little bit north of six miles of streets annually. And in 2017, I believe it was, or the end of 2016, we changed that mix because I was dedicated to paving more streets in the city of Athens, and we were able to accomplish nine miles of streets in 17. In 18, we jumped it up to 18 miles of street. And then in this year, it was a little bit north of 20 miles of streets. This change, as Auditor Heck was just indicating, wouldn't be to the negative for the street fund. It would actually increase another $50,000 to $60,000, give or take, which, again, would allow us to maintain and possibly exceed the amount of street repair that we've been doing with our annual paving. And as the auditor was indicating, it's also putting the general fund to the positive above what would have gone in had we not taken $90,000 out of the transient guest tax. It too will be to the positive as opposed to the negative. In other words, not receiving as much as they were. If I'm not mistaken, it would be close to, it's currently minus, as council may be aware, of the $215,000 that goes in, 60 with council's authorization goes to the Athens County Economic Development because we pay to be a member. So we're talking, you know, $155,000, $160,000 that remains, and that would go in, take 90 off of that, that would leave you with $65,000. But with the increase, as the auditor was saying, it's actually going to put it higher than what would have happened had we not touched the transient guest tax as it goes into the general fund at all. So both funds would go up.
Okay, we've got two questions here. Councilmember Paul.
Can I just add to that?
For sure.
Just to clarify, that we calculated the change in the tax mix for the street fund two ways, at the mayor's request, at 0.75% reduction and a 0.1%, and actually, the 0.75% is about $97,000. But the mayor asked that we, asked council to go ahead with a 1% increase because we have, and as there are changes going through council tonight, changes to our income tax revenue made by the state. And so we are all worried about the general fund in a way, and rightly so, but in my mind, this is actually going to help the general fund quite a bit, and really not hurt the street fund appreciably, as the mayor said. 2017 is when we had the last tax mix change, and we've had several over the years, but I'm pretty comfortable with this arrangement myself. So, that matters to anybody?
Couple of questions.
We're talking about the amendments still, right? That's what's on, that's the word. I just want to make sure.
We are, we have, we're doing that, but there was some critical information that we kind of wandered around when we were looking to termination. So, Councilmember Paul, Councilmember Butler, thank you for the reminder. Councilmember Crowe, so Councilmember Paul.
I'm wondering if the gas tax has a sunset clause on it?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I'll see if I can jog the mayor's and the auditor's minds on this. From the transient guest tax, the amount dedicated to the general fund, relatively speaking, percents that end up in each department is relatively low. Is that correct?
I mean, the auditor could more easily answer this than I could, but as that, as the money goes into the general fund, yes, it's parsed out to all departments throughout the city. And it's proportional as to who receives, you know, what amounts of money. Auditor, do you want to speak anymore to that?
And I can send you examples of what your ordinance looks like and what the spreadsheet that we use to parse that out, because the taxes that are voted on are for specific things, like, you know, the pool, and those come off the top. And then what's left is about 86% of the total tax revenue, and that is parsed out according to council's wishes. So it's, you know, 73% into the general fund, which is the majority, and then, so 73% of 86% is about 67% or 66, maybe. So, you know, it's, it gets that way, and I can send that out. But we have changed over the years. We added 1% of that mix for transportation as we started growing our bus routes, and there's just, you know, it's really up to council, how they want to use that money. It's all, as I said, general obligation money.
But that answers, I think, Council Butler's, Councilmember Butler's question that the first line of the ordinance says to be paid out of this, supported with a transient guest tax, so...
Well, we're using that as our measure. I think if we only brought in $50,000 a year on transient guest tax, we wouldn't be venturing into this. But the fact that we have this money, not that long ago, we used to put all our revenue from the TGT into our tourism fund, and then we would spend it out of, our share out of there, and it was more separated. But really, according to the ORC, we're not supposed to do it that way, so council made that change. So it's going into the general fund, but as we said, we've got $60,000 going out to the EDC right off the bat, and we consider that as transient guest tax revenue that we're using.
All right, so we've got an amendment, yes. Is it about the amendments? Okay.
And it's basically whether something should be added to it, because when I look at the projected expenses that you've listed in your documentation, the initial, I believe, cost for the first year is $5 million, and $3 million something is for the trail itself, and then there's, it looks like there's about $500,000, $600,000, which is going to anywhere from advertising to marketing and stuff like that. And I just wonder whether there should be any kind of amendment that would give a preference to local businesses for that kind of purpose, since the whole purpose of this trail is to encourage local businesses. And I know we have a lot of people in Athens who are capable of marketing and website development, so I wonder if the amendment should require something to that effect or some direction to the mayor for the purpose of Orca.
Perhaps the mayor can clarify.
I think what you raised is a good one. I think that's, it could be an Orca decision in terms of, you know, whether it's hiring local marketing promotion folks or, you know, even trail maintenance. I mean, there's a number of different things, but I think what you're getting at, it shouldn't necessarily be, you know, a mandate through city council ordinance, but rather through Orca, which Orca, as was mentioned, just again for reminder to everybody, you know, the members of Orca are the city of Athens, Athens County, York Township, the village of Chansey. I'm missing, thank you, Nelsonville. So there are multiple Orca members that sit on the Orca board, but...
There's members of nonprofits, too.
Okay. Okay, so I think we have a motion and second for the amendments under consideration. We've had a little bit of tweaking, removing an ing from one phrase and replacing contract... and replacing contract with agreement on the bottom of page two. And what I'd like to do is ask for a vote. All those in favor of approving the amendments to 11019? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. And I have, I see a question from the audience, yes. It's been, it's been removed from the table and read for the first time. I think we could, we could go ahead and have comments. What I'm going to ask tonight, I really appreciate all of you being here tonight. I appreciate the previous comments. We all appreciate the emails and have tried to respond to those. What I'd ask tonight is if anybody is wanting to speak, what I would like to do is take the people who have not spoken before to come up. Is there anybody who wants to speak tonight who has not spoken before? If you could come on up, tell us your name and address, and if you represent a group. And Councilmember McGee even likes to ask.
If you have any legal interest in this financial.
Okay, and you do need to, when you've finished with it, so we don't mess with the timing, you need to make sure you sign also so our clerk of counsel can verify the writing on who you are.
Okay, my name is Rory Robinson. I actually live up in northeast Ohio. And I'm down here basically in follow-up to a letter that I sent to the members of counsel and the mayor regarding my experiences with projects such as this as a 41-year employee of the National Park Service. I am happy to announce that I retired after 41 years in January. But, you know, I still had a lot of experience. The program that I was in was called Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance. That program allowed me to work in communities on projects such as this. So I really did gain a great deal of insight and experience. I'm not going to reiterate, because this meeting's gone on long enough, what I shared with you in the letter. I would encourage you to please look at that letter. I included in that letter my contact information. Should you have any additional questions through me. And I also would like to share with you a handout that I put together that just kind of provides a snapshot of the benefits of projects such as this. So I'd like to leave this for counsel, and I won't belabor this. I just will encourage you, based again on my experience, to get comfortable with the ordinance language. I can appreciate that. But support this because this truly is going to be one of the greatest things that you have done for this community in a long time. And just one last thought regarding, you know, the transient bed tax. That's going to increase. And I didn't hear anybody make that comment, so I just want to make that comment. Yes, you're moving some of that money around, but the amount of money going into that is going to increase. So again, I'll leave it at that. I will hand this out. And I would encourage you, please, if you have any questions to me, give me a shout. I proudly admit to the fact that I've never had an original idea in my life, but I've been around a long time and seen these projects succeed in community after community. And I would like to share those thoughts with you if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Hi, my name's Amy Brenner. I live at 30 Lexington Avenue in Chansey. I'm actually a council member and also mayor-elect for the village of Chansey. I just want to say thank you guys so much for consideration of this bond. It really means a lot to me personally, as a resident of Chansey, to push this project along. You know, Chansey is a veteran community to Athens. Our children attend Athens City School District. We shop and dine in Athens, and many of us work in Athens, therefore paying Athens City Income Tax. This, I think, is important because the health, the safety, and longevity of Chansey should be important to the city of Athens. When Ohio began making budget cuts to the local government fund, municipalities like Chansey suffered greatly. You know, and sure, we don't have the means without some sort of intervention to be able to address our aging infrastructure. And this trail is providing us an intervention. And that's so important to us in our small government to be able to provide some hope for our residents and things that they have to deal with on a daily basis. This trail system is, you know, like I said, for Chansey, but not only just Chansey, also for the neighboring communities. This opportunity for economic development has serious implications for positive change and change that I hope you'll support to continue to facilitate this and move things forward. So, so yeah, I'm asking you to please offer your support for this bond, which will encourage countywide economic growth and allow alien communities a chance at some sustainability. So, thank you.
Thanks from one elected official to another to taking more time. Do we have other people interested in speaking who haven't spoken before? Thank you.
While we're waiting, would you entertain people speaking on additional comments that they had shared before?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Owen. I live in Palmero, Ohio, born and raised there, and 30 years living there. I am the director of Southeastern Ohio Trail Runners. It's a nonprofit organization based out of Athens. We've been in existence since 2014. And our main goal is to promote trail running as a healthy, viable recreational opportunity in southeast Ohio. And the main reason, or the main way we do that is to put on trail races in this region. In 2019, we had over 1,100 participants in our five events during the calendar year. And over the past six years since we've put on races, we've seen participants from 40 states. So I am just coming here to show a voice for a different user group. You know, we talk a lot about mountain biking, and these trails will be optimized for mountain biking. But I'm a voice. I represent the entire community of trail running, and not just Athens. But I'm a large voice in Ohio and throughout the country. And I will say that trail runners should be looked at as a group that will add to the participation numbers of the Bailey's Trail System. Me, myself personally, I participate in races all throughout the country, from California to Georgia. And I spend many weeks throughout the calendar year traveling, specifically to visit trails, to race, to train, my family vacations and locations that have trails. And so I've seen trail destinations up close and personal. And a lot of that decision goes into the number of miles in trails. And so, you know, we already have Stroud's Run, where I put on the Thunder Bunny Trail Races, which has 400 participants, which is one of the top five largest trail races in the state of Ohio. We already see the positive number of people coming in for this sport. And that is a national trend. Trail running has increased over 100% in the past 11 years, from 4.2 million to almost 10 million participants nationally. And that's on par, if not a little bit higher, than mountain biking. And while there's not the data that supports the, well, it's not out there yet. It doesn't necessarily not support it. But there's just not data showing spending habits or traveling habits. But I think it would also be on par with the way mountain bikers travel and spend money when they're recreating on trails. And so just simply being a voice for another participation user group with trail running instead of just mountain biking. And then just to say this to National Park Service, a former worker here, America's greatest idea is known to be the National Park Service. You know, why not create a good narrative in Athens County to be giving that same concept of using our natural resources for something positive for a change? All right, thanks.
Yes. Commissioner Schmiehl.
Chris Schmiehl, Athens County Commissioner. Thank you, council mayor. I'm just here to say that, yeah, this is a very complicated deal, but I think it's a good thing for Athens County. You know, I was looking at the, up in Cleveland, the city and the county, they get together, I mean, they issue big bonds, you know, like 20 million dollars, you know, for this project and this. So really, I mean, this is a small, like, I think, a small project. But I think us working together is really, is really great. And echoing what Amy Brenner was saying about, you know, the positive impact on, you know, Chansey, Bookdole, Nelsonville. And economically, I just think that tourism is where we're competitive. You know, it's hard to build big factories in these hills. But, you know, I think we're really well situated for 88 miles of mountain biking trails. So, and I, I hope the projections, you know, are correct. And, you know, we knock this out of the park as long as Seth doesn't go around to every other community and build 88 miles of mountain biking trails. So, yeah, I mean, you know, the commissioners were waiting for you guys to take action. But I believe that we're supportive. And, you know, the fact that the Wayne came to us with this innovative idea is, you know, a godsend, I think. And hopefully, we can get this done and make lots of positive impacts in our county and region, so.
Great, thanks. I ask a question of? I'd really like to just get comments through tonight, and we can follow up with questions later.
We can talk later.
They can talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just let me check Mr. Swearingen to see, is there anybody else who has not spoken before who would like to speak tonight? Okay. Come on up.
You know how much I hate doing this, right? Time in, time out. You're after me, not this project.
My name is Todd Swearingen. I live at 23 440 Lightner Road, Gainesville, Ohio. Athens County resident, pay Athens County taxes. The reason for tabling this motion two weeks ago, or this ordinance two weeks ago, it seems to me like part of the questions still haven't been met. Some numbers have been responded, some requests have been responded to, and some numbers have been provided, you know, outside of this room. And maybe everybody is satisfied up to that point. But the accuracy of the numbers, as far as revenue generation, the accuracy of the guests, the accuracy of how far they're traveling, the accuracy of how many nights they'll stay, all these projections. There are still unanswered questions, which were the reason for tabling the ordinance in the first place. So it seems to me like it's only logical to hold reservation on tabling the ordinance again until those first questions are answered the first time. Second thing is pay for success. Nobody has still identified what percentage is being paid for what degree of success. In these ways, nobody has presented that publicly. I'm sure to the bond agents that will be presented. And I keep hearing the really good ideas and the really good rationales for doing this. But it's like everybody's walking with blinders, and nobody is pointing out any of the things that are counterproductive that could be and should be addressed as part of the economic equation before the financial commitment. Yes, I'm referring to carbon debt. Yes, there's a cost offsetting carbon debt. But by the numbers that I provided to counsel, time in and time out over the past three, four weeks, you can invest 3 million in solar photovoltaic. And this isn't the best region, but it still provides energy and dollars. You can invest 3 million, in over 25-year period, you reap 8 and 1/2 million dollars, of which 5 and 1/2 of that is, 4 and 1/2 of that is profit. It's about a 6% return on investment per year, averaged out over 25 years. So you're even beating inflation. So there's virtually no reason not to pursue carbon offset, except that it's just inconvenient. It creates the perception that maybe this is a big enough bump in the road that people will start to get frantic, and the original ordinance won't get passed. I would put to you and to all proponents that it's high time, as responsible citizens looking forward to the future, that we address carbon debt relative to this project, and we offset it. And we commit to the offset before the third reading of the ordinance. Anything short of that falls way short of the admonitions of counsel and council members and private or mayors and public that we follow the Paris Climate Accords. And we consider, and we can continue down that path. This is creating a carbon debt without the carbon offsets, which is going backwards from the Paris Climate Accords. That's not what the city has basically proposed that it do as a community. So I would suggest that everybody sit down before the second reading of this, consider tabling it until this is addressed, and consider including carbon debt in the whole doggone equation because we're talking about, one, it's profitable; two, it makes good sense. It would bring more people to the area. They would be more conscious. It's the best thing you can do. And otherwise, we're just doing something half-baked.
Thanks for the comments. Excuse me. Oh, okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment tonight? Yes, come on up, sure.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Morgan. I live on 4 Edgewood Court. I've been a resident of Athens since 2003. Councilmembers, thank you for reading my emails of support. You all know where I stand on this project. And I've spent a lot of time looking at the materials that Seth has put together and the analysis. And I've spent a lot of time looking at it. The invitation's still open. If you, anybody wants to chat one-on-one with me to get my thoughts, I'm not going to regurgitate those thoughts here. I don't have time. But I would like, as you think about this going forward, to share a quick story with council members and the constituents in the audience tonight. The year was 2004. I was in Palo Alto with Will Coniker and Dave Shoal to secure and finalize the terms of a $10 million equity investment in diagnostic hybrids. The deal had big headwinds because they learned of competitive technology in their diligence process. As chief financial officer, I was responsible for preparing all the long-term financial projections and modeling for the deal. I was meticulously prepared for any questions that might come up from the partners at Summit and their team of Ivy League MBA analysts. Not a single question was asked about my business plan and projections in this meeting, and I was certainly vexed about that. Greg Avis, one of the founding partners of Summit, came to our deal meeting. Greg had just retired, but Greg is a Silicon Valley legend in the venture capital world. He came to our meeting because he wanted to meet Will Coniker and the team that Will had put together. Near the end of the meeting, I asked Greg point-blank why nobody asked me any questions about my projections. And he looked straight at me and said, Jeff, we invest in people, not spreadsheets. Needless to say, they made the investment. It was a bright-line moment in my career that I will never forget. I think that's what we're doing here, investing in people. The next morning, Greg took me out for a classic Palo Alto cycling tour around Palo Alto. That's what we will do as Athenians if we go forward with this Bailey project. We will invite our guests out for classic cycling tours of Bailey's. Why did we go all the way to Palo Alto to raise this money? The short of it is, they believed in us and what we were trying to build. The ones closer to home that didn't probably wish they would have. I believe in the people behind this project, and I believe in the business community of Athens and what we have to offer.
Thank you.
I have a proclamation. From Hockin College. I'm Scott Krepsen. I live at 14391 Kearns Road in Millfield. But I'm here as a representative of Hockin College. I have a proclamation for the support of the Bailey's Trail System, right here, fancy. Whereas Hockin College is committed to a supportive partnership with the Bailey's Trail System and its governing entities, building on the college's 50-plus-year legacy of sustainable natural resource management. Whereas the Bailey's Trail System, on 9,000 acres of U.S. forest land within cycling and walking distance from Hockin College and the Hawk-Hawking Adina Bike Way, will create a premier trail network in our natural resource-rich region. Whereas Hockin College supports the improved health and wellness of area citizens through involvement in human-powered recreation and trail activities. Whereas Hockin College will serve as a partner institution in the development of the Bailey's Trail System by providing facilities and support services that celebrate shared missions, growing careers, and changing the lives of our students and local communities. Whereas Hockin College endorses, endorses... Whereas, Hockin College endorses asset-based community development in our region with an understanding that our work with local communities and our natural resources will provide access to recreation and offer a variety of programs for children, families, volunteers, and collaborative organizations. Therefore, Hockin College supports the passage of the funding measure proposed by the City of Athens to support in full the Bailey's Trail System. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Scott.
Hi, my name's Danny Twilly, I live at 33 Graham Drive, and this will be short, I don't have my notes in front of me, so I just want to say that now that it's come back to first reading, one of the reasons that I heard after talking with many of you on council is that you have questions, you have things that have been unanswered. Well, now we've got more time. I encourage you to ask those questions, do this publicly, ask it via email. Now, many of you had expressed that it felt like it was going quickly, you hadn't received the information, you were just trying to digest it to know what questions to ask. So now that we have that time, I encourage you all to ask those questions, be open about them. Ask the, the ones that you're curious about, ask the hard ones, but ask them, because if we don't know what questions you have, there is no way that we can provide you the information to make an informed decision. So now we have the time, you have access to many, many people, ask the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just point out that council is not allowed to ask questions at this point in time.
Right.
I think that would be appropriate to know, because some of us have a lot of questions.
We're not unthinking, okay. We'll figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
We'll address that with you, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dawn McCarthy, I am representing the Wayne National Forest. I do not own any property around the Bailey's Project, however, I do own property within the city of Athens. So I would just like to say, first of all, Jason Reed, the Athens District Ranger, could not be here tonight, he has been, is traveling back from Denver, where he has been attending a conservation finance conference, and he said that the eyes of the entire Forest Service around the country are on the Bailey's, so no pressure. Anyways, I, I would like to just say that I did provide some information by email to President Nysley earlier today, if there is, and that is on where we're at currently with funding for Phase 1 construction, as well as all of the grants that are either providing support to the Bailey's or directly providing money for the Bailey's. If any more information is needed, please let me know, and I would like to invite all of you out to the Bailey's, so if you would like to set up a field trip, please let me know. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And, and point of clarification, I did receive the email back from Dawn, I asked her permission to share that with council, so I will do that immediately after the meeting, and the meeting. Yes, okay.
May I echo what Dawn McCarthy just asked of you, council, because after going up there on Sunday, I was so overly impressed with this project. I, I encourage you all to go up there, maybe not en masse, because then you're in official meeting, but go up there, one-on-one or whatever, and go and look for yourselves.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to, first off, Seth Brown, Quantified Ventures, I have spent the last two years of my life dedicated to Athens County and this project, primarily around trying to fund and finance the Bailey's Trail System. Our work has been funded through governments and nonprofits, and we do not have a financial stake in the outcomes of this transaction, it's an important part to note. I'm excited to continue the conversation, I think every single one of you have been receiving emails from me, some of you have taken me up on the offers to continue learning and educating, but the, the short and sweet of it, guys, is that, you know, our company, Quantified Ventures, tries to work on really hard problems that improve communities, from climate change to homelessness and everything in between, and this is a hard project. Funding large-scale innovative projects in rural America is hard, and very rarely do complex solutions have simple answers. And we fundamentally believe that these projects should get funded, and they can get funded, but in order for them to work, they have to be in collaboration and innovation with a lot of partners. And that sometimes complicates things, but it also makes it a really amazing opportunity, we think, to fundamentally change the way in which we look at economic development in this country. And going through that, I am excited to continue to be partners in those efforts, I'm excited for the amendments as they will increase transparency as the work we do with the county and Commissioner Schneel, who was here earlier, in trying to achieve that endeavor. But, so I will continue to reach out, and feel free to do so as well, and members of the community as well, we will be responsive to them as we can. And then, you know, lastly, we fundamentally believe that this project is impactful, we fundamentally believe as a fact that outdoor recreation can improve communities, that mountain biking in general can improve communities, and this project, social return on investment far exceeds the cost of which we are doing it. And so as we go forward and as we work together, I'm excited to be working with you guys and just making myself available as we have consistently in the past, and we'll do so in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? I appreciate you being here tonight for waiting, and we will then have the second reading in December. Okay? All right. We have a few items before we adjourn for the evening, one of those being the opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Stephanie, yes, if you'd like to come up.
Stephanie Goldsberry, 20 North May Avenue. First, I want to thank you for my last time being here, because something was accomplished, and I, Chris Nysley and others that came to a meeting about Cable Lane, I hope, I think we've made some progress, and I thank you for that. I'm here tonight, actually, I've had other successes with the city here lately, so thank I'm here about the bed and breakfast, the B&Bs and all this other thing, and I just have a couple of little things I want to say. One is, who is going to govern it, who's going to oversee it? What section of the government is going to check that things are being done correctly? Any answer?
We're, we're here to hear your comments only.
Okay, that's my one question. The next one, I think that the city needs to slow down a little bit, because from the information the last time, you didn't seem to know what you had already, and I don't think you can move forward and open it up to make it bigger until you know what you have, know what you can control. Okay, that was the other one. Then, of course, another big issue I have is parking, because there's been nothing addressed to parking. I have talked to some residents, unfortunately, I haven't been able to do some of the work I should have done because of some health situations in our family, but there are R1s that do not have excess parking area on the street, and to put something like this in there would be an abomination. And I just wonder, what, are there certain sections that, of R1s that are going to be designated, and other R1s that are not going to be designated to be allowed to have B&Bs and what have you? That's my other question. So, parking's a big issue, growing when I don't know how you're going to take care of it, and making sure the city gets their financial benefit from it, as a concerned citizen, that's where I stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will comment that there is a public hearing tomorrow night.
I know. I was mistaken, I thought there was a little public tonight, too, so.
On another issue, sorry.
But I didn't say my.
Thanks for staying.
And tomorrow's public hearing is where and when?
At 6:30 at the Athens Community Center, and that is on the, the regulations for air beach, for short-term rentals and some of the guidelines.
Rooms A and B.
Any other comments?
Scott, is McGee, yes?
I think he may have left. Okay, thanks, we're ready, we're ready to go, I think. Scott, if that's still loud out there, close the door so we can hear, please.
I thought maybe you were writing on Peter to come back, I didn't.
No, I don't think he's back there. Scott, could you check for us by any chance, or somebody check to see if, if Peter is in the council chambers, or the council member offices? Thank you. And if he's already gone, we'll make sure that he gets your written copy. Mr. Stoffer.
Thank you.
Everybody seems to have disappeared.
I, I don't think he's still here.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe you can answer Ms. Goldsberry's questions tomorrow night, I'm hoping we get questions answered tomorrow night, maybe you can address her questions tomorrow night. Before I get started here, before you start the timer, this should take 3 minutes and 30 seconds, if you don't give me the 30-second warning and I don't stumble. Short-term rentals, VRB, B&B, and especially tourist homes, I would like to address this big controversy that is proposed by the mayor, Chris Fall, RE, Planning and Development Committee, to reduce and remove the property rights of all property owners and residents in all R1 zones in Athens. I am and many more residents are completely opposed to this legislation, which will affect all R1 zones, but more likely to have the greatest ill effects on the near-east side and the far-east side. The far-east side has already had their quality of life and peaceful and quiet enjoyment reduced and/or ruined by the illegal operation at 30 Utah Place. I have received some information that seems to indicate that the Safrans from 36 Utah have contacted the city several times since at least September of 2017, and still have gotten no results and no enforcement or citation issued against the offending party. When Ms. Eliasen wrote them, 30 Utah, a letter, they then apparently hired two law firms to promote their position. While I understand the political pressure the administration is put under by this gifting announcement dated June 13th, 2016, they, the folks at 30 Utah, state 12,654 people have visited Center House. While I note they, while they note eight nonprofits have visited, all of this activity still took place in someone's R1 neighborhood. Whether all this activity took place for profit or for nonprofit, the stress on the neighborhood is the same, excessive noise, traffic, parking issues, litter, and possible property damage. I have made public records requests as follows, October 14th, October 22nd, November 6th. I was directed from the mayor's office to the code office two times for any information that I was to receive. The second visit to the code office was November 8th at 10:00 a.m. to meet Mr. David Riggs. Mr. Riggs suggested I visit David Dudding at IT. I visited Mr. Dudding that same afternoon at 2:00 p.m. He refused to accept my request and sent me back to the mayor's office, where Patty informed me they would now fulfill my request. That was Friday, November 8th at 2:15. Patty from the mayor's office called me today, November 18th, at 1:05, and said she had part of my request, and I said that I needed it all to try to put together how this evolved into the situation we all find ourselves in. I would think five and a half businesses days would have been enough time to complete my request. Since they have been aware of my request since October 14th, tonight I submit to council and the mayor the same request I submitted to council on September 11th and October 14th. Hopefully, you will answer these five questions tomorrow night at the public hearing. They are simple, common-sense questions. While I requested these questions be addressed in writing to council members on September 11th and October 14th, I have still had not had the courtesy extended to me in so much as a no comment from members Grace, Fall, and Nysley. I think we are lacking the transparency that you folks so much like to talk about. I'll hang around till we're adjourned, in case anybody would like to talk.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else who would like to speak? Brandon.
Hi, I'm Brandon Thompson, 16 Eden Place, I'm actually not talking about anything else we've talked about, I am talking about street closures, and I wish Pete was here, because I know he's working on this or whatever, but it's going to be warm soon, that means street closures are going to come, and I know there's been some work, last time I talked, there's discussions about, you know, fixing things, and I had a meeting with AUBA last week, working on that, I think Pete will be coming the next one or whatever, but I wanted to come to council, because I figured it'd be easier than sending an email. I still, I asked this last time, you know, are there any metrics that council uses for street closures? And when I'm talking about street closures, I'm really talking about the uptown area, because that's most of where, I think the contention comes from. And if there are metrics, where can we find them? I know safety is an important thing, but, and if those metrics don't exist, can we create them? And if they do exist, when's the last time we looked at them? Because I know in the last few years, we've had a lot of events pop up, and so it's important for event, anytime we have a new event, you're inspiring a new person to do an event. So if you're on Court, that's why so many things happen on Court Street, people see things there, so they're like, "Oh, let me do this." But there's not a lot of information about what's needed for a street closure, at least I've not been able to find that, and I, I do three street closures a year, so I feel like that's probably one of the highest for Court Street or whatever, and I've not been able to see that. So I just ask council to maybe just look into that, if it doesn't exist, maybe if we can create that, because one of the things I'd like to find out is, what does the community value, and how do we get to that for a street closure? Because there's always contention, there's, there's businesses, and I spoke with AUBA, members of AUBA, and we talked about how a lot of times neither party really knows how the street closure's going to happen, you know, like, a different group of council could be here that values different things, you know, and then in 20 years, it could be all business, so no street closures happening, because they don't want to affect the business, or it could be all event people, and Court Street's closed all the time. I don't think either of those are good for Athens, so I'd love to see just more of that. So I wanted to present to all of you guys, I know Pete's been interacting with that, but, you know, if those metrics exist, let me know, I'd love to find them and then make them more public so people can do that, so. And I was just here for Bailey's, but this was something, I was going to email, but I figured, just do some homework for you guys, so, appreciate it.
Thank you, all right. Okay. All right, I think we have everybody. I think we have everybody. One last call? All right, if not, then a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
All right. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Okay. We stand adjourned at 9:33. Thank you.